Video.
Hey Pam, I see that you're online. Can you hear us in the room?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good to go.
All right, we'll go ahead and call our June 10, 2025 bike and pedestrian meeting to order. We don't have the formal agenda today because we're going to be focusing on having work sessions. For committee members that we have in the room, we have myself, Kim Stryder. We have Matt LeRao, Ron Davis, and Larry Zerrose. Our fast planning staff that we have here in the room is Jackson Fox. And we also have Don Galligan, the FNSP transportation planner. And then from Kenya Engineering, we have, can you guys introduce?
Randy Kenny.
Randy Kenny, nice to meet you.
Yeah, my first.
Okay, nice to meet you. And then also in the room, we have that Hall from DOT. Online, so we have.
Oh, sorry, we have, so yeah, Pam Golden.
Okay, oh, yeah, Pam Golden from the statewide DOT.
And then there's another guest, Robert M. I don't know what I-I-Y-T clinical.
Oh, all right.
I can do a lot of talking.
I just live on Gold Hill, that's a, I have a Zoom, I'm a yoga therapist and it's my, or Zoom handle. I tried to change it to just local, but there you go.
Okay, thanks for tuning in, Robert.
Yeah, thank you everyone for attending the meeting. We had, at the previous meeting, we had a project discussion. And based on that, we now came up with a preferred alternative. Olivia sent out kind of a summary of, you know, how we arrived to preferred alternative. But at least one person hasn't heard that who is tuned in, so. Let me think. I guess for the purpose of this meeting, let's go first to the comments that we heard last time at the meeting. It was mainly comments for the non-motorized users. And some of the concerns, the concerns that I jotted down were, one, that in the slip lane, like we have still on the graphic right now there on the right side of the intersection. There is a concern that vehicle or traffic does not always see the approaching bike or pedestrian if they're on the right side. We had comments that our original intersection layout had too many islands leading to three-phase crossing of the intersection. We also had someone speak up that even though the parks pathway is not cleared in the winter, it's not clear to snow in the winter. It is still being used, so we should think of how we can make the non-motorized crossing there as user-friendly in the winter conditions as we can. There were questions, I don't know if that was at the committee here or other comments we received. If we can put the rapid rectangle or flashing beacon where these slip lanes are. I think this comment was mainly from the public outreach, but we had a comment to make sure that the pathways approaching the intersection come up high enough. So the bikes and pedestrians approaching the intersection are visible to the vehicle. They don't just like come sharply up, correct the signalized crossing. And we had comment on aligning the shared use path to those slip lanes in a way that wouldn't cause much out of direction travel and people cutting across where we don't want them to. So in addition to these comments, we also had the two alternatives we presented to public and on the website, the alternative A and alternative B. The A was the proposed auxiliary lane for the southbound right turn from Sheep Creek onto Parks that would then merge to the through traffic. And alternative B is offsetting the Parks westbound right turn lane. These alternatives were developed based on the crash data analysis. Since this project is HSIP funded, the purpose of the project is to reduce the documented crashes. We had a really successful public outreach, we received almost 75 comments. Most of them were supportive of improving this intersection. We did not have too many, I like alternative A, I like alternative B. We had a few, and so seven specifically stated preference for alternative A, which was the auxiliary merge lane onto Parks. And four stated preference for alternative B, which is the offset right turn lane. And I just want to acknowledge that I am aware of these numbers and they kind of go in the opposite of the preferred alternative that you see here. Because we had a number of other factors that we took into consideration coming up with a preferred alternative. So we preferred, we came up, or we chose alternative B as the preferred alternative between the two. Because we went back, one of the reasons we looked at alternatives or as we went through the public process. This might have been apparent to the design team, but from my perspective and the big picture. I realized that providing that auxiliary right turn lane and having a non-controlled pedestrian crossing there makes it less friendly to the non-motorized users. Because really the vehicles coming there, other than having the non-motorized users to come into cross, do not have an expectation of having to slow down or yield for anything. And due to the, you know, context of this intersection where we don't have large amount of non-motorized traffic crossing, over time it can create an expectation for the drivers and they stop, they may stop looking for non-motorized users. And therefore they may fail to stop when needed. So we went back to why we, you know, why we proposed alternative A. As I said, the project is HSIP funded, these alternatives were proposed to, you know, reduce documented crashes. And one of the advantages of alternative A over alternative B was that it reduced, it improved the conditions for right turns from Sheep Creek during the time when there was a sun glare for the right turning vehicles and they couldn't see, which led to some crashes. there was a sun glare for the right turning vehicles and they couldn't see, which led to some crashes. However, with, because the project is installing the traffic signal, that takes care of that concern because people are not comfortable making decision if it's safe to go, they can just wait for, for the signal and they can proceed the right turn on the signal. So so that took care of the sun glare and we felt that we can not proceed with alternative A and still get the benefit of improving that because of the crash. Like I mentioned, the main reason for dismissing alternative A was the safety for the non-motorized users. We looked at, so we looked at, okay, we are going to provide basically like a free right if we have the slip lane from Sheep Creek onto Parks Highway. However, can we slow down the vehicles via geometry? And because this is a truck route and we have to accommodate tractor and trailers. The turns for those vehicles require a large turning radius, so that's just another, another another item that would increase, potentially increase the speed of the right turning vehicles from Sheep Creek. And because of the protection of the most vulnerable users of the intersection and following the other discussions that I mentioned, we did not select alternative A, but went forward with alternative B, which is the offset right turn lane. We also, based on the public comments, we received additional plus for alternative B that was brought up to us and that will remain a plus when we signalize the intersection that offsetting the right turning vehicles from Parks Highway with a median will make it more clear for the left turning vehicles from Parks Highway onto Sheep Creek. I anticipate, well, just like any time in my experience on projects when I have a preferred alternative, some, you know, some users are happy, but that some users wish the other one was selected, so we did look at can we make, can the project make some kind of improvements to offset the the potential delay for the right turning traffic from Sheep Creek onto Parks Highway that they wouldn't experience if we moved forward with alternative A. And we decided, or we were able to we looked at the proposed signal for that intersection and there will be a time when the Sheep Creek right turns are able to happen, are protective. When the left turns are not, so we're going to put a green right arrow at the signal to to improve the intersection flow. Are there any questions so far?
Yeah, pretty dumb one. What are these little stars that look like suns on your sports?
Highway lighting, street lighting. So based on all the comments we received from at the previous meeting and from public comments, we looked at alternatives for potentially, you know, for improving the non-motorized crossing. After we compiled all the comments, we had, we met and we discussed potential alternatives to the intersection layout. We looked at the alternatives where having two islands, like we had on the original public outreach, having one island on each side of the intersection. So those are two alternatives and having no traffic islands and just a really long, no signalized crossing, excuse me. At the same time, we also looked at, you know, how this intersection layout would work with the alternatives A and B. And like I just explained, we were able to eliminate the alternative A. So so in regard to, you know, do we need the traffic islands, where should, can we just have one, where should it be? We looked at how the intersection functions, more than one third of the vehicles in the westbound direction end up turning right onto Sheep Creek Road. Which led us to head to needing that island over there. And Randy, can I have you to kind of go to the background of why that the, having the island that is important with with a large number of right turn traffic?
Sure. The island itself is, is a, it's, we call it a slip lane, but it's also known as a channelized right turn lane. And it's, it's one of those features that by design, Dan, stand up here, this point is really beneficial to, from a safety standpoint, to reducing the conflict or the potential crashes between a cyclist approaching, in this case, we approaching westbound simultaneously with a right turning vehicle turning right going westbound. Whenever you have that condition with just a single right turn lane without this channelization, there's a much higher frequency of crashes than there is with this configuration. This configuration has been around, well, the new versions of this configuration has been around for maybe ten, fifteen years. And the idea is that you would like people that are in this right turn lane to be able to slow down. So you don't want to make the radius too large. Now, we have it shown as a little larger radius here, but that's because of the turning truck traffic. But you wanted to them to slow down so that they can you know, yield the time for this pedestrian cross. Also, this pedestrian crossing would cross perpendicular to that lane because that is the best way for the pedestrian to view the oncoming traffic rather than if they're right parallel across a crosswalk. They're having to look over their shoulder behind them. So by bringing that pedestrian or bicyclist, excuse me, around so that they can address that oncoming traffic at a ninety-degree angle instead of a hundred twenty or, or greater angle, that's a safer, safer configuration at all. The other thing about this right turn lane is that mentioned that there's four hundred, oh, you mentioned the proportion, but there's like four hundred vehicles that are projected to turn right in the future. That's a lot of traffic to turn in our right turn lane. So that's one thing, it's, it's probably with, it greatly, greatly increases the efficiency of the intersection for vehicular operations. But the other thing, if you think about just from the safety side, the speeds on Parks Highway are in the fifty-five range here. So if you don't have that right turning lane, that means people are stopping, they're slowing down doing ten or fifteen miles an hour turn right at the intersection. And without that right turn lane, they become targets for, through, you know, for falling through people. So that right turn lane is an essential part of the safety of this intersection as well. And since it's essentials for safety, the best thing you can do is to try to design that right turn lane so it also is safe for pedestrian crosses as well. Is there any questions on that?
You know, why can't you use a hawk there?
A hawk?
That flashing thing will clean up. I mean, because that's quite dangerous, that right-hand turn for pedestrians.
So the hawk would signalize this movement only, yeah. The only thing I can explain is that you have a vehicular signal here and then a hawk signal here. So I think maybe you're talking about, maybe just a signal, a separate signal for that lane.
Yes, that crossing, I'm sorry about that. I mean, those are kind of things that are dangerous.
Do you mean, do you mean that orange one that flashes or the red one that flashes?
One that's on the university.
And so that is a hawk.
Okay.
It's blank, it's blacked out until somebody pushes the button and it gets activated. I haven't got a good answer for that other than that it is another layer of control that probably conflicts with the other pieces of the intersection control as well. Well, this, this movement here is going to have a pedestrian signal, you know, walk, don't walk signal. So pedestrian, once it gets to the side, it can see both directions here. The one thing I'll say about this is that, you know, this vehicle as it approaches and makes this turn here, we'll probably try to square this up so its, its angle is more intersecting at a right angle, so it can't take this curve at a higher speed, but nevertheless, it's still going to be a relatively low speed. And so by, by doing that, you know, to be, anybody that's standing there, they have to make a choice, they have to recognize that there's a conflict coming and a vehicle coming. And then there's, there's some level of communication and hopefully that, or what people are supposed to do is yield, supposed to yield that cross pedestrian.
That chance.
Well, I
Especially that guy says, you know, troubles there all the time.
At guys.
They're, they're birds.
Yeah. These are, these are supposed to be safer than, than than standard right, right turn lane. I don't know the, what the standard of practice is for controlling that one crossing there, but I could look into it.
Well, the hawk would do it, I think. That gives it clearly notice of, and it gives some safety from the perspective of the destiny.
The trouble with the hawk, just, just to vision this, is you have a hawk with an overhead, it's up high, it's flashing red. But at the same time, you got a green signal over here. The question is, I mean, thing I would be concerned about is, is there a level of confusion where, you know, in Park Speedway, somebody sees a hawk, they stop. And then but the person behind them sees the green and they keep going, so there's a rear collision. Those kinds of things, you got to be very careful of trying to mix and match traffic control, they got to be prepared with that, right? So that's the one thing, I mean, I hadn't thought of a hot before there, but that's the one downside I can see. That it would be difficult to sort out that conflict between the signals. There, there has to be something else that we can do there.
Would, would just more of that amber rectangular beacons be better?
Rectangle fashion beacon, I don't.
They look to do it. Yeah, there are warrants that we need to meet to put those in, and it doesn't meet the warrants for that, I'm not sure, did I, it doesn't meet the warrants to put that in. There's just no, you know, non-motorized traffic. And, and it probably going to have the same result for that hawk. We did bring that, I don't know if you recall, but that pedestrian crossing from the middle, kind of, it was before aligned a little bit to the middle of that of that radius, and now it's a beginning of it to, you know, to make a decision point before the vehicle starts making a turn and starts looking over their left shoulder so they can that was to, to help the visibility of the normal rights users that are on the right side of that lane.
Well, I just heard people coming off the parks who just want to make that right-hand turn and not pay much attention to anything coming out of that bicycle path, that crossing. And without some kind of control.
So part of what we did in moving that pedestrian crossing back is to separate it from the yield onto Sheep Creek Road extension. Normally, if you have through traffic there, you have enough traffic where someone's going to be more likely to come to a stop there and then have to look. The only conflicting traffic we have with that is that left turn off of Parks. So by separating that and bringing that pedestrian up to where they're crossing, they're coming in more perpendicular in line with the right turn lane. So that right turn vehicle is getting over into that lane and then that pedestrian is going to be in, right in their line of sight right there. So they're not hitting off to the side, they're going to be right there, whether they're in the island or off to the side on the right. And we can, as we get into more detailed design, we can tweak the geometry in there to help slow people down as they come into that.
I also think we're contemplating stop signs for that for the pedestrians or the bicyclists.
Just to make the expectations clear there for the non-motorized users.
That would help.
It's done, it's done, Eric, question? Oh, Don, I was just wondering, and I will say, I do like this this design much better than what was previously presented. And I agree with, with Ruth that the goal here is to slow traffic through that turn. Along those lines would a pedestrian table with something that
At the crossing itself?
I think we did consider that, and the problem is that wrong, the blades hit it right when you go over the raised pedestrian crossing.
Yes.
So.
What's up with this ring tape?
It's an elevated crossbar, so it's at the same level as, as what the curb, so, you know.
It's one of the
It effectively acts as a speed home to the speed. Yeah, the blades, yeah, that's, that's an argument of utility. I, I live in a neighborhood that has those right on road and it's in the borough, so it's a road service area. They're not God's gift to good to, to good plating, that's for sure, but they can do it without taking out the speed humps on the road.
Well, that's, those are probably creators, it's a lot different than your father.
So you guys have a blade, it's like the belly blade or something?
Well, we have a throw plow and a belly blade.
And it's the belly blade that hits it?
Both.
Well, now that my tips.
Pam, did you want to talk about your comment for the
Um, sure, I can, I can address that. So I, I'm looking at the new MUTCD and what we're going to be adopting here this fall in the Alaska Traffic Manual. Because it, our warrants for an RFB are changing to be more aligned with what's in the National Manual, which wasn't in the previous one. I, I'm going to be the one here that says an RFB might be okay, a hawk in this location, I don't think we would warrant, the warrants for a hawk are pretty high. And that's, that's all I wanted to drop in there.
What do you mean the warrants for a hawk are for a crime?
So the number of pedestrians crossing versus the opposing traffic and the length of the crossing, they all factor in.
And what does a warrant mean? A justification is what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Signals, hawks are signals, signals mean warrants to avoid putting signals up where they shouldn't be. Because signals can cause problems in themselves, they increase delay for everybody, they actually cause, they may solve certain crashes. But they may increase other types of crashes, so there's a warrant system, nationally accepted warrant system for signals that engineers use to justify installations.
Yeah, I'm sure there are lots of reasons on both sides to do something, but what seems to me those kinds of crossings are pretty dangerous without some sort of hawk or some signal. Especially that pre-right-hand turn, I mean, those guys, they're not paying attention to what's coming across the side.
Especially that pre right hand turn, I mean, those guys, they're not paying attention to what's coming across the sidewalk or right path, they're going around the corner. Quickly and efficiently as they can, which is understandable, but it's also dangerous.
Do we have any other panels online that wanna? Give any comments?
For the record, Susan, Bissell joined us and Jim Richardson too, they're online.
Let's just raise your hand or unmute if you'd wanna speak up online.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that, you know, we we live in Fairbanks and those crosswalks don't mean anything. To most drivers and I see that frequently on my commute now with the trying to cross Johansson and Steece. With that slip lane that for the southbound traffic on the Steece. The way that I cross that now without any sort of a signal is that I kind of like inch out gradually into the crosswalk. And sometimes I inch out so far that cars actually have to change their trajectory to get around me, so they see me. But they don't stop and they don't slow down much either. So. I I mean, I just think without a signal. Yeah, I don't, I don't consider that very safe. Unless the idea is that the bicycles and pedestrians just wait there until there's no more traffic and then they they can cross, but. Drivers in Fairbanks don't, they don't respect that crosswalk.
What if you tied the the pedestrian request buttons into like a rectangular beacon and that way we'd turn them on?
I think I've seen some around town like on some of the Cowell Street one like that where you push the button and then it starts blinking a light.
Yeah, that's on this university.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure what the logic would look like for the signal program.
It would be a standalone gear, just activated by the user just for that one way, so it wouldn't be tied to the main signal. And I heard Pam saying that requirements for it are changing and it could be installed here. When I checked on it, I thought. It was not the case, so we will look at it.
So one of the things you need to think about, retiring the signal with the rectangular beacons is you don't want the beacons to start flashing if there's no pedestrians there. Because that pretty much reads ten percent devices if.
Yeah, I'm I'm out at the airport and I deal with that four lane crossing with the rectangular beacons and it's to the point where drivers ignore it, so I go down Dale. Just to avoid that because, you know, I've had three tour buses in a row, in a row, just roll right through there and I'm.
Yeah.
In the lane.
Yeah, I I understand that there. There's no.
They're warning, they're not.
There are warnings, there's no statutory requirement, I don't believe that people are required to stop.
But once it's in a lane, then they offer.
They're there to encourage yieldy, that's what they do.
What about an advanced warning? So if you got your regular crossing sign where they push a button, maybe not the the strobes come on, but just a flashing light. But another one back further, so once people, you know, somebody pushes a button, the one that the intersection lights up. But another one partway down, so when somebody's in that turn pocket, it comes on to give them advanced warning that, hey, somebody's standing there waiting to cross.
They do that for game animals?
Nah, who cares about safety? So Ron, if I, targets, just you're talking about putting some sort of device or warning device. This advance of that?
Yeah, so just your regular one and maybe, like I said, not the stroke, just a flashing yellow when they push the button. But put another pedestrian crossing sign partway back. Two, three hundred feet with the same yellow light, just to alert somebody in that turn pocket. It's not obnoxious, but.
And I think I could live with that, a flashing yellow right of the pedestrian crossing and then and one another sign further back.
It just maybe triggers something in their eye that, hey, there's somebody up there wanting to cross ahead of me, I don't know.
And so you, you also had mentioned considering pedestrian stop signs, so if you did a. Advanced warning, you you'd still have that introduction with the stop sign?
I believe the pedestrians are still required to yield, to stop rails, to the traffic. The orange lights are warning lights, they're not required to traffic to stop.
Is our guest still online?
No, Robert left.
Is, is there anyone else online that wanted to provide a comment? You guys have any other questions here in the room?
I think the best solution is one that not a hundred percent of people are happy with. And this has fixed most of the complaints that I've had and I can kind of live with the rest that. Isn't up to my ideal, I understand the design constraints.
Going for the cars.
You're happier at what you see now than. Oh, definitely, definitely, yeah. And it seems like the feedback was received and taken into account.
I'm glad we could get those incorporated in.
I wanna again thank everyone, I mean, this group or the public comments, it's what helps us, you know. Design of the project or the location, what it's like, it's. Appreciate it.
Do you have any idea kind of like what the schedule into the future is gonna look like?
Yeah, we're trying to do next summer construction. The. Traffic of the signal poles will be likely delayed there along lead items, so there may be a temporary signalization until they come in, but. Right now, that's the expectation. And we're constructed next summer.
Would they completely shut down the intersection for the empty tour onto Old Hill or just? Still have some, have them keep it open?
Yeah, but I expect the intersection will likely shut down.
All right, well, thanks a lot for you guys for coming to our meeting, that's really nice of you.
Thanks for shifting gears.
Good compromise.
Guess if no one has any other comments or questions or concerns, we can go every adjourn.
At four forty, four forty.